It's not a condition of zoning. And that's generally the case. But these type of causes because they're private agreements. So this is the most direct way we find about what happens. It's in part of these. We found a later reference in the 1999 case. And on the left hand side, you can find a letter to the company. As part of the rezoning. When they're asking as part of the rezoning to have certain conditions change including. You know, making us develop. There was a zoning property. It's also referenced in the file at the time. That was collected by the staff. However, there was no action taken. So unfortunately, we don't have a final outcome for this case. The case was withdrawn at the time. We don't know for what reason. But to summarize more, we find mentions of a property in there. But we do not find conclusive evidence that the property is in place. Yeah, attorney of. On the circle back to the cases and the whole from. You know, the details of office offer back to the agenda items. As we have, we may not be. But you know what the status of the property is. And I would ask you to utilize these kind of documents as a sort of context for your decision making. But I would like to lead it up to the rezoning and the tax amendment that you all have before you. And I would ask you for your decision making. Reference the specific decision making criteria for rezoning. And to sort of give. You know, so to say the item. And what is not. Then as a reminder, I would ask you to make recommendations for both. So if you recommend approval for the rezoning. And likewise, if you issue a recommendation of denial for the rezoning. Please do a recommendation for denial. And sometimes we have. Thank you very much. Is there any other staff presentation going on with this? All right, and. Like I said, there'll be plenty of time for people to speak. And I think in fairness, since we have two items and we combined them, then 20 minutes on either side. You don't have to take 20 minutes if you don't want to. But with that, we typically go first with the people in favor of the proposal. And then for those people in opposition to the proposal. So first up, I have Mr. Ben Webb. Welcome. And we have in nineteen thirty name case, we have some documents attached of your package there that do reference the buffer. So I'll go over this. And all of that was sort of a test of part of the package, but I go over some of these items in the case files. We have a copy of the minutes from nineteen seventy seven where the zoning was approved. It shows that it is approved conditional, but it does not reference the specific conditions that that were accepted upon upon rezoning. The later cases show what's called a statement of zoning condition that was used at the time. It's a handwritten document that was probably, and we don't quite know, that that was probably part of the application for the zoning. So what we assume is that it's written in by the applicant at the time. There are checkboxes if there are sort of conditions to be imposed for a variety of things. On the bottom left there, it fills in information about the buffer that is similar to what was handed out there, which was put in place, hundred and fifty foot to two hundred foot buffer. And so it's it's hard, it's somewhere mentioned in the case file, but we don't pursue now. What is this document? It's kind of a road it has. It's not signed at the bottom, so there's a signature at the end there. And the document itself is not referenced in in the minutes for it. But we've also found a site plan that appears to be from nineteen seventy seven. It shows and it shows a hundred and fifty foot buffer and two hundred foot buffer in different parts of the parcel towards the neighborhood on the west. There's a handwritten a handwritten a handwritten note at the bottom. It says approved plan for that zoning case. We presume, but we don't know, that this was done at the data time also. This this document is part of the data case file. That this was later edited. We also want to show you all the nineteen seventy seven documents that were put in place between the neighborhood and the developer at the time. There's a private agreement that stipulates certain developments characteristics. On the right hand side, that are provided right there. There is the buffer mentioned at at the depths, which is called itself. There's a hundred and fifty different feet. It is referenced in here and and there is to be different options when it was to have a buffer that needed to. The ominous association and avoid could have been could have remained with the developer and it was supposed to expire after twenty years. Would have been approximately nineteen ninety seven. Again, like you have the handwritten note that they have. It's not a condition of zoning and that's generally the case with these type of documents because they're private agreements. So this is the sort of the most direct way we find the buffer reference is in part of these these documents. We found a later reference in the nineteen eighty nine zoning case. Again, it was in a buffer at the subject property. This was done by the owner at the time and on the left hand side you can find a letter that was submitted to the county as part of the rezoning, when they're asking as part of the rezoning to have certain conditions change, including a few of the references as only proper. The need to, you know, making us develop the time to watch. There was a zoning buffer. It's also referenced in in the file at the time that that was collected by the staff, however, there was no action taken in this. So unfortunately, they you know, we don't have a final outcome for this case because it was withdrawn at the time. We don't know for for what reason. So to summarize more, we find mentions of of offer in there. But we did not find conclusive evidence that the buffer is in place, but yeah, attorney of of the law. Want to circle back to the cases of the whole problem. You know, the the details of of this buffer back to sort of the end agenda items. As we have, it's the, you know, we may not be able to find out. But you know, what the the staff is up to. And I would ask you to utilize these kind of pre- rezoning documents as a sort of context for your decision making. But I would like to lead it down to the rezoning and the tax amendment that you all have before you. And I would ask you for your decision making reference the specific decision making criteria for zoning. And to sort of give non-surprising items on what is before you today and what what is not before you today. Again, as a reminder, I would ask you, as made a recommendation for both the agenda items in tandem. So if you know, if you recommend approval for the rezoning, then I would ask you to do a a recommendation for the tax amendment also. And likewise, if you issue a a recommendation of denial for the rezoning, then I would ask you to issue a recommendation for denial for the tax amendment. And likewise, we are.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other staff presentation going on with this?
No.
All right, and like I said, there'll be plenty of time for people to speak, and I think in fairness, since we have two items and we combine them, then twenty minutes on either side. You don't have to take twenty minutes if you don't want to, but with that, we typically go first with the people in favor of the proposal and then for those people in opposition to the proposal. So first up, I have Mr. Ben Webb. Welcome.
All of this went through a variety of documents, someone mentioned our clarifying case, private agreement referred to expired nineteen seventy seven. And I don't think there's a dispute either that there is no zoning condition expressed in states of the state. The documents we just went through, we've all had for over a year. City attorney has had plenty of opportunity to review. Then, and as you heard, the city has directed it into proof of this application. It's our request that you recommend approval as well. And I know there's some clear opposition, but does that just this issue can go on for a few years? Um, neighbors, the residents, the council throughout that time. They've been able to come hearings, they've been able to take position, let everybody know what their argument is. You know, when we came here last month, you know, my sense of use, the planning officials applying to approve, approve the request as identified by staff, but you know, the neighbors look, we need thirty hearings. Our work's not here. And the message was, okay, we need thirty cases of that. And just to clarify what we're talking about here, we've heard a lot about a buffer. What is being proposed by the city is still a hundred and fifty feet separate. The first thirty five feet is undisturbed and the remaining one hundred and fifteen can be disturbed if it's used as part of space. And to put that in context, at least prior to the Dunwoodyville Drove Lay, there was never a buffer in the city Dunwoodyville. So I think the city's done a good job of negotiating on behalf of the neighbors. If one fifteen today, we got some information from the neighbors and suspect you guys got it too. You know, we've had a chance to look through it, there's nothing new there. It's the same information we've all had for a year. It's the same arguments the neighbors have picked for a long time and it's all materials, arguments. But the city's lead. It's our position that South Cape is fully and fairly vetted, you know, as you've heard, the city of Jack, if we're moving tonight. With our request.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there anyone else speaking in favor of the applications? Okay, with that, we'll move to the folks that are in opposition. And first on my list is Attorney Brian DeGruel. Good to see you. Long time.
As you said, Brian DeGruel here on behalf of Dunwoody homeowners association, a member of nineteen components of this is our statement of opposition. They have gone through many of the documents, many of those documents have been in existence. At the last meeting, we asked for an additional thirty days, we have really just been brought back in. During this six month period, the city and the property owner had discussions that didn't involve anybody that's done with homeowners association. In the intervening time, we have propounded an open records act request, literally to every department in the cap county trying to track down. As you know, the government is required to maintain book ordinances that it has at county has its same obligation under state law. And yet it still cannot lay its hands on the actual ordinance from nineteen seventy seven. Now, staff and Mr. Webb both commented about the minutes and commented about this information. We don't have anything showing what the conditions are. And I would submit for your consideration, we also don't have anything showing that in nineteen seventy seven, the property was zoned C one. Because in the absence of an ordinance, both of those questions are over the air. There is no ordinance that exists presently before us, it's out there in the world, that shows this property was resold to C one to allow people to develop from Harlan. So we're assuming it's C one, but we're blowing past all of the information. And there's not a single document that has been produced, staff has reviewed, the city has reviewed, not a single document that suggests there isn't a condition. In fact, every single one of the references condition, every single one of the plans that are available, whether they come earlier or later zonings, all reference a buffer. It's illogical to have the property north of us that has already been put into the the new overlay and the property south of us has buffers that are a hundred and fifty feet. Because they could find a copy of the ordinance that we're being penalized because the cap county couldn't find. Dunwoody was formed because the cap county wasn't managing the survey particularly well and y'all wanted to control that. And these homeowners expected all of that to transition over. It's not their fault that the cap county couldn't maintain. But I want to point to a critical piece. When Mr. Webb is describing what's available and staff is describing what's available, they're talking about this in the context of a court case where it has to be established to a requirement. That's not the case for y'all. Y'all aren't sitting here as a judicatory body. Y'all are sitting here as a pre-legislative legislative body. Y'all will make a recommendation to council, council will act legislate. The standard under a legislative action is a rational basis. Is there a rational basis to take an action this way or that? And I would submit for you that the existence of multiple sets of minutes, multiple zoning application, the applications itself, all of the documents that have been found have indicated that there is a buffer, that it was conditional zoning. And we said at the last meeting, the fact that what's in the record, the minutes say it was a conditional rezoning alone makes the notice that has been published on this incorrect, but it still shows the C one. C one, we don't know anything about the conditional, but every single document says condition. There's nothing but a contract, nothing says it doesn't have a condition, there's not a single site plan that doesn't show the buffer. And so I would submit for you, there is a rational basis for y'all to recommend, not deny, we're finally being brought into the overlay. But to recommend approval with the condition that when y'all looked at this back in the beginning of nineteen, or twenty twenty, y'all said do option three, and that's preserve the buffers. There's a rational basis, every homeowner down the roads that have bought that western boundary have bought and have owned and lived there in reliance on that buffer. And to take it away and put in thirty five feet of trees left where there's presently a hundred and fifty. And you can say we still have separation, but there's a vast difference between looking across a football field that's been cut and made into an open park and looking a hundred and fifty feet deep into mature forests. So to suggest that it's going to be the same, it's the same buffer is just completely not found. Y'all have a rational basis, there is evidence that this was how it was done. Whether it is conclusive or purpose of court, one shall put the blessing on it, one shall act. It is a new world, y'all have the opportunity to create a new world that corrects anything that ask y'all as y'all consider these, recommend approval, recommend approval conditional on what you looked at last year. And that was a buffer that protects these homeowners that are directly adjacent. This center was developed conditional on Mr. Lamont saying he wanted to have a hundred and fifty foot buffer. And we would ask that y'all honor that, that he shares like, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. DeGruel. All right, next up on my list here, we have DHA president, Mr. Bob Frisella. Welcome, Mr. Frisella, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas, glad you could make it in person.
Well, it's my pleasure to be here with you. Which one? There's 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 so many of them.
I just want to echo a little bit about what Brian said and and talk about what Mr. Leonard said at his presentation. What's interesting is
Usually I'm pretty loud without a microphone, but thank you, Paul.
It's for the people that are watching us and there are thousands, I'm sure.
Oh, thousands. Hey, everyone. It was interesting, three of the comments that Mr. Leonard made during his presentation, that he, I'll quote him. He said, quote, "We don't know," quote, "we presume," quote, "we assume." Why are we assuming, presuming, and we don't know when we are deciding the future of their property? And and quite frankly, I still don't understand why the city hasn't taken the ball on behalf of these residents and rolled with it and got over to Duquette County and filed an injunction and said, we need to get into those records rooms, record room, and we need to find this out. I don't understand it. In all fairness, you know, the commercial owner of this property, to my knowledge, has not filed any paperwork about redevelopment, any drawings have been submitted. I'm still not sure why we're doing this right now when we just don't know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Frisella. Next on our public comment cards is Mr. Wittenstein. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you very much, Robert Wittenstein, eleven forty six Bordeaux Court. I am going to encourage you not to approve the request from the owner. But I'm going to do that with a couple of caveats. First of all, I think it is in the interest of the city of Dunwoody for shops of Dunwoody to be redeveloped. We've been working to enhance Dunwoody Village as a walkable place where people live, work, and play. And that's in the interest of Dunwoody. I'm also keenly aware that while all of us may enjoy trees on somebody else's property, we're not entitled to those. We're certainly not entitled to them in perpetuum. That said, there's a serious problem with the approval. And that is that it eliminates the requirement of the property owner to negotiate with the neighbors. If you approve, if you recommend approval, and if the city council approves this, then there is no incentive for a consensus agreement to be reached. The property owner will have won and the neighbors will have lost. If you all recommend denial or conditions that retain the buffer, then ultimately the right way for this to be handled is for the property owner and the neighbors and the city to get together and to reach an agreement where everybody feels like I got some of what I wanted, but I may not have gotten it all. But approval of this without conditions means that that bringing to the table will never occur. So my, I encourage you to to either recommend non-approval or to put on conditions so that we can get to the point where everybody sits down at the table and compromises. Let me add one other thing, and that is that throughout the city of Dunwoody, between commercial districts and residential districts, we have a hundred and fifty foot buffer. That is really standard. We recognize, we've always recognized that there needs to be a buffer between residential and commercial. And I would argue that thirty five feet of undisturbed buffer, when there is already a hundred and fifty feet of undisturbed buffer, and to allow a hundred and fifteen feet of that to be bulldozed and planted with grass doesn't represent the spirit of the idea that we want a hundred and fifty foot buffer between residential and commercial. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wittenstein. Next I have here, Alan Holloway, if you please come up and introduce yourself. Welcome, Mr. Holloway.
My name's Alan Holloway, our family lives at fifty fifty seven Trail Ridge Way. Our property backs up to the shops at Dunwoody, so we have a vested interest in it.
You have ten minutes. I thought we'd give him twenty minutes, since there were two items, and we're putting them all together, if that's okay. Well, I mean, that's what I announced earlier was twenty minutes for and twenty minutes against, if that's okay. Does anybody have any objection from the board? Okay, so we'll keep it balanced, but there was only one speaker for Mr. Webb on the positive side. I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead, Mr. Holloway.
No problem, I'll agree. I'd like to say that our family is not anti-development, we actually are encouraged about redevelopment shops at Dunwoody, we think it could be really accretive to our community. And so we are excited about that. But we purchased our house a few years ago with the understanding of the undisturbed buffer. We were concerned about owning a residential property that backed up to commercial property. And we understand that the planning commission has the task of balancing competing stakeholders. But I'd like to invite each of you to come to my house for coffee one Saturday morning at eight o'clock. Even with the the big buffer that we have now, it's really loud. We have all manner of trucks, deliveries, tractor trailers. We have dumpsters being emptied, we have incessant barking from Camperinamut. And it's really, even with a hundred and fifty feet to two hundred feet we have now, it's really distracting. And we don't understand why, I completely agree with the last speaker, and that we don't understand why we're going through this process now, when we've had really, we've had no contact, no dialogue whatsoever with the commercial property owner or their council. And we're concerned that an act by this body today and subsequent approval by the planning of a city council will thwart our ability to have a voice in the conversation. We also agree too that the the meeting minutes that were delivered to us today by the public record request clearly indicates an intent of a buffer, of the existing buffer in the site plan that's attached to the the rezoning application from nineteen of the November of nineteen ninety. In closing, we ask that you do not adopt the proposal today. We want to be treated just the same as our neighbors to the north and the south and not be treated any different. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? If I see somebody raise your hand, if you want to introduce yourself, we've got a couple of minutes left, if you'd like to speak, just tell us who you are and state your case, please.
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm Sharon Frank. I'm at fifty forty nine Trail Ridge Way. And I've been in my home for forty years. Enjoyed all the luxury of the beautiful trees. I concur with Alan, who lives next door to me, Alan and Ellen. And the noise, the tumult that occurs with our beautiful buffer would just be as good as I can't even think of the word. I I it is incumbent upon me to speak, even though I wasn't planning to. And I appreciate the job you have before you and want fairness, equality, and unequivocal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in opposition? All right, the for and against is closed at this time, we'll turn it over to commissioners, but I just want to get a clarifying point addressed. First, the applicant here is the city, as I understand it, not the property owners. Is that correct, Mr. Winard?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. There there's actually a reason for that, and you recall, there was a long process where the citizens got together and went through charrettes, meetings, online comments, and participated in developing this new overlay district for Dunwoody Village. Many of you here were probably part of that, which is a great thing. So I just want to clarify that the process resulted in a plan and the plans put forward into the new Dunwoody Village overlay district, as I understand it. From that, then you had these two property owners object to portions of that plan, which resulted in a lawsuit between those property owners and the city over that citizen-led plan. So it's not really these applicant, these property owners themselves who are saying, you know, this is our plan, it's it's the city's plan, it's it's really your plan in many respects. Now, individually, any of us may have objections to one part or the other of the plan, and I certainly understand that. But I just wanted to clarify that point. The second clarifying point, and this may come from the lawyers in the room as well, clarify for me the issue of the advertising to allow us to address this that's before us tonight, because as Mr. DeGruel pointed out, that as I understand the argument correctly, due to the fact that the C one advertisement did not incorporate some reference or another to any kinds of conditions of zoning that may exist, that somehow or another that advertising is legally insufficient. Because let me just say this, if it turns out the advertising for both this meeting and the next city council meeting is legally insufficient, then that raises a lot of questions, as we like to say as lawyers, it gives a hook to the lawyers who oppose the process to do something about it. So if if that issue can be addressed, just at the outset, so we don't have to dwell on it much longer as we talk about the important aspect of, really, what should we be doing?
Yeah, so we we think we advertised the meeting properly with the zoning district as it is referenced and then the zoning ordinance. We'd be happy to run this by by the city attorney before it makes it to the city council to get a determination one way or the other and to get that clarified.
Okay, I I think you should, and Mr. DeGruel and then Mr. Webb, this, you all were doing a quick point counterpoint that we attorneys you all the time. And I don't know if anybody likes it, but it hopefully will help us understand some things. Mr. DeGruel?
Yes, sir.
If you got to the microphone, because there are people online that maybe listen.
Usually I'm loud enough. If you look even at staff's recommendation, the existing zoning map shows C one. Usually I'm loud enough. If you look even at staff's recommendation, the existing zoning map shows C1C. And all of the historical stuff talks about it being conditioned. The reason that's important. Is both the zoning procedures law and Dunwoody's notice requirements require as part of the advertisement that you advertise the category it's going from. To the category it's going to. If you say C1 and it is in fact C1 conditional, as the zoning map presently shows. And as the historical documents reference. And you don't advertise that, you have a defect in your advertisement. You're saying C1 to the overlay versus C1C. That, as you know, under the zoning procedures law, which is very strictly construed, is grounds to overturn the decision. That's the basis of my.
Thank you, Mr. Web. If you could address that.
Thank you. I disagree. We do believe that this application was advertised correctly and the fact is that's not an issue we can solve tonight. I mean, this is not a legal body. Paul has offered to have the city attorney review that prior to the city council, which we agreed to. So I, I think that's the appropriate course of action. We've looked at it. This thing has been advertised repeatedly in different contexts, and I don't see an issue with it now, but I don't think we need to solve that here. I don't think we can, honestly.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. I just wanted to get that on the table since I know it was raised so that we don't dwell on it as. On our role as non-lawyers here as we address the things before. So I'm glad to hear that the staff will get with the city attorney. And address that before the city council meeting in order for them to have good advice from the city's attorney, not this one. All right. So let me turn it over to the planning commissioners if I go to Ms. Harris, Commissioner Harris.
All right, I'd like to, Richard, can you clarify something for me? I heard one of our speakers. Say that we have a one hundred and fifty foot standard buffer between residential and commercial. I was not aware of that. Can you use, let me know if that is accurate or otherwise.
I'm not aware of that either.
Do we have parcels in the village area or otherwise where there is a smaller than one hundred and fifty foot buffer?
Yes, there are buffers that are thirty feet. The village townhomes are forty feet buffer. Just on the opposite side of them.
Thank you. Just to clarify, is the city's position that this buffer, if there were one to exist. Is not that they don't believe it exists or that it's a legally binding buffer?
So we looked at the plans and zoning files. We don't believe that. There's no presentation that was considered a zoning condition.
But it may have been an agreement between property owners, meaning commercial and residential.
Correct.
Then would it be your position? So the city's position is that it would have been an agreement between property owners. And the commercial property owners, residential and commercial. And so then would it be the city's position that twenty years after that was made nineteen seventy-seven, that it would have expired?
Yes, and, and that, that list of covenants is specifically talks about that.
My last question is going to be. If this were to not pass. What would the negative impact be, if any, on the city? And what would the city anticipate as a negative impact on the commercial property owners if this were to not pass?
Well, the lawsuit is still there. That Mr. Webb filed or they. So we'll probably end up at court.
Okay, so court, let's, long term, let's assume that. From a development perspective, what would you see as a negative impact from the development perspective? Of us not being able to move forward. With the, with the redesigned buffer being the thirty-five foot tree line, the hundred and twenty foot park.
I don't know because I'm not the developer.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That was fantastic. Richard, one question, sorry. There was a comment made that back when we did this. Community exercise where we got to, we got to talk about Dunwoody overlay. There was a reference made by, by one of the speakers that talked about back in twenty twenty, there was a comment, but preserve the buffer. Does that remind you of anything or ring a bell for anything?
Yes, I had conversations with many of these people. My personal opinion was that thirty feet should be the entire buffer around the entire thing. They spoke up and I believe it was you all that said, yes, we should go with them, so.
All right. And then one more question I just want to clarify. You mentioned that there are buffers already in the Dunwoody overlay that are less than the one fifty, the hundred and fifty feet. All right, thank you. Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. And I don't have the, the benefit of, of having the entire previous presentation from last time in front of me, but. I guess one of, one of the things I'm trying to puzzle out and Richard, if you can help me with this. If, if this is still winding its way through the court. Why have us review it now if there's likely to be guidance from a court given to the sufficiency of the, of the zoning conditions previously?
So. City council had asked me to sit down with the property owner and negotiate. A buffer. So we have come back and negotiated thirty-five foot undisturbed buffer plus the hundred and fifteen. So in essence. Hundred and fifty feet is still there. So by bringing it to you all. The hope is that they would drop the case.
And what we're hearing is indications that that perhaps would not be the case because I'm hearing thirty-five. Well, thirty-five, I don't, I guess I don't understand then why there's an issue. We're talking about preserving a hundred and fifty feet above. Thirty-five plus a hundred and fifteen.
Correct. Currently, I guess they feel that the whole thing is undisturbed. So.
So the issue is the disturbance versus not disturbed. Of that one hundred and fifteen foot portion of it. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm assuming that's correct.
Is that, well, is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So. To distill it and, and I would be interested if, if, if your understanding of theirs is different, then I'd be interested to hear the other side of this. So really the issue is not the actual complete size of the buffer. It's the fact that disturbed versus non-disturbed status of a hundred and fifteen feet of the buffer.
I'm assuming that's correct.
Can, can somebody on the other side of the argument maybe confirm that for me?
So as you recall, when this came before the council and came before the planning commission, sorry. Last year, as it wound through the process, y'all actually recommended option three for this portion of the property, which maintained. Kind of an equidistant undisturbed buffer, the entire western boundary. The property north of us. Still has the old buffers. The property south of us does. This one chunk is suddenly going to move to thirty-five feet of undisturbed. And there's no restriction. And we don't have an issue with counting toward their open space. If that's the piece that's in question, that's fine. It's the point that they are in fact talking about being able to cut everything from thirty-five feet inward. Turn it into a grassed commons or something like that, which will dramatically change the buffering ability of that space. It's like I said, it's one thing to look over a football field that's grass and another to look into a hundred and fifty feet of trees.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Webb responded.
Of course, yes.
I think I can answer your question a little more directly. So yeah, we're talking about the hundred and fifty feet buffer is what they're asking for. It's what we're proposing. The only difference is the first thirty-five feet of our buffers are disturbed. What they're asking for is that the entire one hundred and fifty feet be undisturbed. I want to make sure it understands that the hundred and fifteen feet. East of our thirty-five feet of undisturbed is open space. So it's not, it's going to be parkland essentially, but it's not going to be tree. You know, my, my recollection is that the reason the planning commission went with. A hundred and fifty feet way back when is because somebody got up and said, hey, there's a condition in place here. We've got support for this and, and, and that can't be ignored. But in any event, you know, the fact is if this is approved. The lawsuit settled. I mean, this is in a, in a negotiated agreement between the city and the property owner. Try and settle the lawsuit. So if it's approved, lawsuit will be dismissed. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard, one more question, please. And again, I'm asking you to speak to something you may not know, so I apologize in advance for that. In the packet that we received this afternoon from the opposition, one of the aspersions that they cast was that this. Clearcutting the hundred and fifteen feet for that portion runs afoul of the Dunwoody tree ordinance. What's your position on that?
Probably not because thirty-five feet would. I don't know. So I read that, but I haven't researched it, but they're still saving. The thirty-five feet. So that's a significant portion of those trees.
And what typically happens when we propose plans that go against ordinances that are already in place?
Whichever one is the last to be approved is the. The one we go with.
So is this, is this a ripe issue for us to hear in light of the new aspersions being cast?
Yes, I believe so.
Despite the fact that we don't have answers about the tree ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
I guess my question is more of just a comment to make sure I understand. The, the legal question that's kind of overshadowing this. So the lawsuit. Right, right now, this area is not included in the overlay. And the lawsuit is to keep this from being included in the overlay. Is that correct?
That's correct. These two parcels were removed from.
Under threat of lawsuit. So. All right. And so that's what's precluding us. I mean. If it was included in the overlay and in the future a property owner wanted a variance, we could look at it as a site-specific issue. And how it impacted with the buffer, but it would have to be included in the overlay first.
It, it, it exists in the overlay currently.
Yeah.
The old overlay.
Yeah.
So it has. The Georgetown feel and whatnot.
So it will become an island of. Georgetown-esque or colonial Williamsburg-esque buildings, whereas there's more flexibility around.
That's correct.
So. A, a future development though could request. A variance from that, correct? To match the conditions of the. The, the, the conditions elsewhere in the village. In the overlay. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, but it would be such a long list of conditions. Because this is not an overlay. This is zoning.
I guess. I'm just, I'm kind of wrapping my head around trying to either resolve the legal issue or. You know, leave it as is and wait till we have something that wants to develop to fix it. Or to fix it now. And I just haven't quite figured that part out yet.
So I would recommend to you all that you are not a legal body. It is not your job to.
No, I'm just trying to decide if the, where, where the decision point should occur here. The, I hear what you're saying with it. And then one of the commenters mentioned noise attenuation. And I wonder if you could just touch on in the. You know, chopping out, you know, one thing that, that hasn't, that brings to mind is trees and vegetation absorb a lot of noise versus. Bare ground where you get the sound that will bounce off and all that. Has, I, I haven't seen that that's been addressed anywhere in the agreement. Is that. Beyond just the city's normal noise requirement?
So they're probably referring to the Camp Runamut, which we have a current.
Well, actually, I, the file was too big, so I haven't actually seen. I'm just. I just, I just, there was a comment about noise that got me thinking about.
I'm assuming that's what they were talking about, pending case in September.
All right. All right. That's, that's all I've got for now.
Thank you, Mr. Bryce. Commissioner Abrams.
Thank you. My first question is. Yes, the opposition, I'll call it. You guys had asked for thirty days last time to see if you could find some records at all from DeKalb County. Was, was anything at all found in the last thirty days?
So I, I had mentioned earlier that we propounded Open Records Act requests to every department. The documents that we did manage to gather, I think we found a couple of minutes that we hadn't seen previously. All of that has been produced to you. We additionally asked the city attorney if he would either use his power or let us write and, and go in over his. Signature into the existing case to use the power of the courts because DeKalb County staff reported, DeKalb County has refused. To allow inspection of their records and yet that's a process that the court can, you know, step right on if, if they refuse. We have actually, you know, and to the question about the case, we've actually moved to intervene in the case and if, if the court allows us to intervene in the case. We'll then be in a position that we'll use the compulsory power of the court to try to get this information, but we have not sat on our laurels for the last month. We've done everything in our power to try to get as much information as we can.
Thank you for that. Okay, my second question is, is there anyone here that can speak maybe from the developer's side that. We know Richard can't, but anyone else that can talk about how a nonapproval of this would affect. Projects at all, maybe Mr. Webb or anyone else? I was saying, is there anyone from the development side that can speak to how. This not being approved would affect this project from a development standpoint?
Yeah, it, it will have an effect is, is we've heard several times tonight, there's a pending lawsuit and, and the purpose of that loss is, is to establish there is no condition. So assuming the court agrees with our position, which apparently the city attorney has up to this point. There's going to be at most a thirty-five foot buffer between. The residences to the west and our property. So, you know, that's the risk, all right? That's really the risk of nonapproval. And what we've done in working in for months and months and for meetings and meetings and zoom calls and zoom calls and phone calls and phone calls with the city is try and find kind of a win-win. And that's what we're hoping. That is advanced tonight. So. Yeah, I think there's a lot of risk here and we're trying to do the right thing and we think the city's trying to do the right thing for the neighbors as well. Thank you.
You have a question or a comment?
I would like to add one point. We've issued a moratorium now on permits at the subject properties. Since, since the case didn't get resolved, it has been extended throughout the end of the year. So it's over time, you know, we're not issuing permits at the moment that could create a hardship credibly. If it continues.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just got one last question here. Is, has there been any talk between, you know, the, the developers, the landowners and the folk? Did you guys talk about tree types at all? Anything about, you know, covering in, you know, open spaces and things like that? With, you know, evergreens or. Okay, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll.
Pull that, pull that a bit closer. That might be helpful.
Do you hear that question?
I could hear it, but if you want to repeat it.
I was saying, so you know, sometimes if there's an open space in, in the buffer, they might, you know, you guys might talk about certain types of trees or evergreens, things like that to fill in some of the open gaps. And spaces in the, in the buffer. Have you guys talked about anything like that? You know, getting with them on any landscaping?
That's not true. We had a call with them early on. They've been involved and they've been. Aware of what's going on and absolutely, you know, not participated in the last couple of months. And I think it's telling that. You know, after requesting thirty days for more information, they drop it on us at one fifteen today. Including the motion to intervene that he mentioned, that was filed today as well. We would certainly be agreeable to filling in the thirty-five feet of undisturbed buffer. I mean, I think that's a reasonable request. In terms of, of what the hundred and fifteen feet east of the thirty-five feet looks, looks like, that's all defined by the, the overlay. So there are different open space options, right? And so we can choose between one of five and what those look like and how they're configured are all. Defined by the city as part of the process that Bob talked about earlier. So. I, I don't think there'd be any objection on our part if you're talking about trying to fill in gaps in the thirty-five feet.
Thank you. I think that's all I have about for right now.
Thank you. Let me ask a few questions and then make an observation. First, the. Hundred and fifty feet total. The street would be to the east of that, if, if, if I understand that correctly. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be on top of the hundred and fifty foot buffer.
Right. So the street's usually what, twenty-four, twenty-six feet wide or?
Yes, but with the right of way, it'll probably fifty to seventy-five.
Okay. Secondly. Were the vision to be built out? On the other side of the street, would there be storefronts or storebacks? What, what would go against that street on the commercial side?
Storefronts.
Storefronts, not the back. Okay. Now, my recollection in having walked a property and others having spoken about it. Is there, there's a stream feature? Is there, there's a stream feature along part of this undisturbed fu- buffer?
There's two streams that begin right there. So it's not along the entire western line. There's only two spots where there are. Whatever you all do, the stream buffers are staying.
Okay, so that stream buffer would. Override any of the overlay districts. Is, are we at seventy five feet stream buffer? Okay, I just want to clarify those points because the property is unique in that topography from the stream to the elevation differences. And, and frankly, the way the buffer differs depending on where you are along that segment from north to south. Okay, but let me just, just make an observation and kind of kick off our conversation. To answer the question, how did we get where we are today? There's actually a lot of deliberation as to how we got here. Many of us have seen cities that surround us in the region do some pretty great things. Some of them are the older cities like Duluth or Shambly or Roswell, Smyrna even, that have, you know. Developed their city centers and have seen success with that. And, and I've heard from more than one person, including myself, that, you know, hey, that, that's neat. Why don't we have that? We have a great city center, don't we? The observations also been made that, you know, we go back thirty, thirty five years and it pretty much looks the same, right? I mean, some improvements and some things coming down the pike under the current system, but it pretty much looks the same. And then we've seen some city centers that have been created whole cloth like Alpharetta. If you've been to downtown Alpharetta. Go back just a few years ago and there was no downtown Alpharetta. You had the, you know, storefronts of this, had the other, but basically strip centers and they created a sense of place. So the idea behind that was can Dunwoody come up with a plan recognizing that we have a significant. Number of parcels that make up Dunwoody Village. It's not like it's owned by one developer. Because the idea that individually the parcel owners would, you know, come up with a plan that everybody would like. Is probably not highly likely, given the process, right? They would come with an application. The staff would review it, the citizens would respond, you know, homeowners associations would make their comments. And it, it, it's a very difficult process by design. But the idea was, can we make a comprehensive plan reflecting the will of the people? And so, and, and I give a lot of credit for this last go around because it was probably one of the most engaging. Endeavors to get opinions of people throughout the city. Not just the folks who show up from six to nine PM on any given Tuesday or Thursday or on Saturday afternoon, but everybody. You know, whether you were younger, older, newer, resident, been around forever, a lot of, of, of comments were obtained. And so through that public engagement process, we ended up with the overlay proposal, which the staff has been endeavoring to put forward into our. Zoning laws, which is the process. And I do recall going to some of the meetings at the branches, very good meetings where a lot of great comments were made. And I just want to thank the people there. Because it's a great place because you have people that really care about the place that they live. And recognizing too that, you know, we all move someplace because we like the way it is and are nervous about change because we've seen change for the worst in many areas. But I also ask the question, can we see change for the better? And so that's the idea behind this process. So what we're left here with now is an overlay district that has generally been, you know, accepted by most folk. But we have two property owners that now, we're not too happy with it, right? So they filed the suit that we have now where a, a settlement proposal has come forward, which is what we're seeing here today with respect to the staff. Because these two parcels were accepted from that overlay district when it was approved by the city council. So then the question is, all right, how do we address this? And, you know, keep it in mind, the overall goal. And the question of achieving that overall goal and the property owners next to it. And, and, and trust me, I personally, I think most people recognize that people who live in Dunwoody should have a big say in it. The people who live next to it have a really close say to it, right? I mean, let's face it, if you're right next to it, your opinion, everybody's opinion matters, but you know. It's absolutely has to be respected and, and, and I get that. So typically is often the case and DHA for decades has done this, homeowners have done this, developers have accepted it as part of the Dunwoody process. Have communicated with each other and typically come to some kind of consensus. Part of our rationale last go around was not only to allow. The folks who were concerned about this to come up with the documentation to show that there were either conditions, deed restrictions. Or, you know, anything that would show that this property was somehow or another encumbered with, with this hundred and fifty foot non-disturbed buffer. I accept the fact that there's probably something there that protects the distance of a hundred and fifty feet with a non-disturbed buffer. I mean, obviously it's been looked that way since forever, as far as we're concerned. But having said that, then what is the next thing that we should do? You know, let's give that as a foundation. And I, I, I turn to the vision, really, the, the vision that the citizens put forward as to this segment. I mean, look, I, I, I didn't look behind there, so I'm, I'm not here to comment like the folks who do. But I have walked behind there. I've heard comments about people who are behind there that people don't care about their being behind there and, and what they're doing. And I have seen how it's maintained. It, it's not a very pretty place. I mean, I, I think most of us would agree, it is not something that is aesthetically pleasing to any eye. Therefore, heck, it should be a three hundred foot buffer, right? I mean, you know, nobody wants to see that. But. The city in its vision that we created says, you know, we want to change Dunwoody Village into something that we all want to be part of. And so that's why I asked the question, what will front the street that goes along there? Storefronts, not the back of anything. And so then we get to the question of, all right, well, how should this buffer look? And I appreciate that thirty five feet in so many parcels does come across as narrow. But I dare say the stream will affect that, no matter what we put down in our words, if we. Uh, adhere to the seventy five foot stream buffer, which, which apparently does. Trump anything that otherwise could be put out there. So, and, and there's one more set question for staff. If for segments, because there are a couple of parcels that are a little bit closer to any other parcels. If the buffer component was reduced. From a, excuse me, increase, if the non-disturbed was increased from thirty five foot to, let's say, half. That distance, leaving seventy five foot for. Disturbed, but you, you can't build up, would, would that affect anything negatively in terms of what the vision is for that portion, portion of the, of, of the segment?
This is all that we are presenting. There's a thirty five feet. That's. What we agreed to with the applicant, or excuse me, with the property owner. So I can't say. What impactful it'll have.
Because the, it, it helped me understand the property owners that objected to this and filed suit. Their concern was. Having codification of the hundred and fifty foot non-disturbed buffer. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Can you say that again?
The property owners who filed suit against the city, the two parcels. Were concerned with the codification of. The hundred and fifty foot non-disturbed buffer, because that, that's part of their property.
That's correct.
Okay, so in compromise, they said, well, we'll accept thirty five non-disturbed. Hundred and fifteen feet of buffer, but disturbable, and then the street. That is what the overlay would provide if we adopted this.
That's where we are, yes.
Because that, that's the compromise. And, and so I assume the purpose as a, you know. Profit oriented parcel owner is because they, they think that would increase the value of their property. I mean, that's my assumption. You don't have to answer that, but that's my assumption. So, so my, my question to you is, to what extent would it change things to go to? Seventy five feet undisturbed and the seventy five foot for, for just these two parcels, the others would be able to be what you have described.
I, I think you'll need to ask the property owner.
All right, well, I'll ask Mr. Webb, and you may not be able to find out because I'm just raising this out of whole cloth.
Well, I, I think. The ultimate impact of trying to find a middle ground here is it's not going to settle. And what we're going to wind up having to do is move forward and try and prove that there is no zoning condition on the property at all, and we're not. Bound to any buffer. Nobody wants to do that. I mean, you know, shops at Dunwoody's been at Dunwoody forever. You know, they like Dunwoody, they want to be a good neighbor, and we tried to find a solution that, you know, again, as somebody mentioned what a compromise is earlier, it's something nobody really likes, but everybody will live with. I can assure you that my clients don't want a hundred and fifty foot buffer plus sixty feet of right of way, you know, on the back of their property. But all things considered, given issues raised by the neighbors, given the issues raised by the city, that seemed like a reasonable compromise, and that's why we're here. So I don't know what else to say other than that.
And you, Mr. Drew, you said, I gave Mr. Webb an opportunity, so if you'll speak from a.
The first piece is it's not going to eliminate the litigation. Whether we get the court to allow us to intervene in the existing action with cross claims and counterclaims, or whether we file an action afterwards. We have not been at the table since it was a settlement conference between the city and the developer. This isn't a compromise with the neighbors. It's an eighty percent reduction of what's there present. So to your point, they're not supposed to, they're, by their own words, aren't building on the roadside out. So whether they do it as undisturbed and disturbed or seventy five undisturbed and seventy five disturbed. It doesn't change their building footprint at all. It doesn't change the road footprint at all. All that's outside of it anyhow. So that was our point. We're not opposed to the overlay being put in place and doing something to preserve or protect. More buffer than thirty five feet. We haven't participated in that conversation. We've not been invited to a single meeting since the lawsuit was filed. And like I said, it's not going to make the litigation go away because all these homeowners facing a thirty five foot buffer are going to be right back.
Just to clarify, we're not, we will not ever make the litigation stay or go away. I mean, we're just here to give advice and.
Correct.
Mr. Webb, did you just want to respond quickly to his point?
Yeah, there's, there's only one piece of litigation and that will go away. You know, what they do in the future, who knows? But to be clear, I mean, the, the point was, you know, you talk a lot about vision for, you know, the Dunwoody Village and for this property. And the, the vision outlined by the city and its, and its residence is a mixed-use development, a live-workplace environment. And the intent is to create the open space, you know, of this critical live-work environment on the backside of this property. So that's why it's important, you know, there's no open space if you've got a, 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 you know, a forest of scrub pine and the other stuff that you saw as you were walking back there. The idea is to make it a pretty park that the folks who live in the new development will enjoy and let their kids, you know, play in. And that's, that's why it's critical to have, you know, open space. But again, we're not talking about paved open space. We're not talking about a parking lot. We're talking about a park next to a thirty five foot undisturbed.
Now, and, and, and thank you. And I'll, I'll just make some, the planning commissioners here some final comments without question. I mean, I, I just, I mean, you can ask maybe somebody, the, the others may engage you in a minute, but I just want to make a couple of comments to what was said. So. The vision does matter. It is a citywide, citizen-led vision for Dunwoody Village to create a place for all of us. The idea that. Storefronts are going to be there versus the back of. A Publix and buildings like that is, is truly significant. The idea that you have a roadway that actually works for people, right? Right now it works for loading trucks and it gives a distance obviously of undisturbed space, uh, uh, which I fully understand. But. The, the, the question becomes for me. Is what we're doing going to add value to the people that are adjacent to it? Or is it going to take away value? Recognizing full well that the people that moved in there like it exactly the way it is. That's my assumption. Right? That's my assumption. You like it the way it is. You may want some other things, but you wouldn't move there if you didn't like it, I assume, right? I mean, that's, that's its life. It was stated in, in, in the documents that were provided us today that what this is doing would, would lower value. I submit to you that the market likes this and that the property values will go up significantly. And even though it's not, for example, connecting to the street that stubs into the back here. I submit to you that the homes on that street, if it was connected. Would also go up in value. And I say that not because I'm a smart person, I'm just an observer where that has been done elsewhere throughout this region. And values have gone up. It's, it's just what the market likes, even though the individuals who live there today may not like it at all for fear of host effects. So having said that, I mean, I, I, I do look at the vision. I think though that, you know, is thirty five feet sufficient for? Non-disturbed, but I'm going to suggest to you, the open space that the city would work with everybody on. Is going to be aesthetically a lot more pleasing. And at storefronts, essentially a hundred and eighty feet away will be aesthetically better than the back of a Publix and other stores. That are restaurant oriented. So I, I, I submit to you that. This is overall the good thing. That between now and the next city council meeting, and who knows, they may defer it. That while sure litigation, you go on and you can prove a point, there's a bigger goal here. And that's a bigger goal that we've all come together to agree on, and that is a Dunwoody Village that. We can say proudly when it's done a few years down the road. Is better than anything else that's around us, and that's why we want to stay here and not go there. So I, I, I'm, I'm done pontificating and giving historical background, so I'll turn it to either one of you to, to kind of chime in and, and suggest things.
I'll start. At, at some point, I am uncomfortable with this because I realize at this point, we've been told we're not a legal body, we're not here to make a decision. But we also haven't been presented with. A situation where there is a defined answer as to whether or not. The hundred and fifty foot buffer does indeed exist as a condition or the hundred and fifty foot buffer was. An agreement between the residential and the commercial property owners. Having that. Instability makes this a very different conversation because one hundred percent, Bob, I agree with you. If we were talking about something that actually expired in nineteen ninety seven, I am. A, a big believer that this would bring value to the neighborhood. I think this would be, bring value to the city. I question if, because I haven't seen anywhere in there where it. Where it guarantees that there would be storefronts facing, right? There wasn't anything written down that said for sure there will be storefronts facing, you know, west towards the neighborhood. That's something that as we've heard, you know, throughout the night is, there is no plan right now. This is setting the stage for there to be able to be a plan, but there isn't a plan. Assuming we were dealing with something that had expired for sure in nineteen ninety seven. I, I personally would tend to agree that I like the deal that has been made. I like the construct. I like the vision. I like it for. For the city. I like it for seeing what's happening around and, and even the homeowners. But we are being asked to make a judgment here. I know we are in a legal body, but we've been presented with a case that is not solid. We've been presented with it, it might be this and it might be that. So I guess I am uncomfortable at this point, given where things are. Just, I feel a bit lost because I'm, I'm hearing. What's the word? Was an injunction filed? What was filed today? A stop, a pause? I didn't even get to read the ninety two pages. I was teaching until four ten PM, went to physical therapy. I haven't even had a chance to go through the ninety two page document that was dropped at one fifteen PM. There's a lot about this that's making me personally uncomfortable.
Mr. Wagner?
I echo some, some similar thoughts. So if we don't make a decision, so what happens if we, if we don't come to a, a decision tonight?
Well, I mean, we, we, we basically have three choices tonight, right? You can do nothing and it goes to the city council. We can make approval with recommendations and it goes to the city council. We can recommend denial with recommendations. Or not, and it goes to the city council. So I will say that the city council in the past, and I think they're right on this, has asked us to be as specific as possible with any kind of recommendations or why we make the decision. Because it's helpful to them as they deliberate. And that, that we share our thought processes in the motion itself.
I got, I know, nothing else.
All right, I, my question here, and, and this body's heard me rail against this every time. Is receiving late notice of material information. One of the, one of the things that flies all over me when we're, when we're. Asked to make significant recommendations as we do is when we get something at the eleventh hour, or asked to consider it and weave it into our discussion. And today I heard potential issues, why maybe we should delay, like sufficiency of the notice, tree ordinances. Potential ongoing or maybe even novel litigation. But at the same time, what we're looking at here in my estimation is a plan that, that. Through a, a, a series of engagements with intent represents the will of the majority of people of Dunwoody. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not deaf to the fact that. Sometimes the tail does need to wag the dog with regard to a, 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 a small amount of people being disproportionately affected. But what we've heard today is. There have been real and material. Efforts to ensure that those being affected would be put in a position to, to mitigate some, if not all of that. And I know there's reasonable minds can disagree there, but we are now, if I'm. But we are now, uh, if I'm not mistaken on our second bite of the apple, perhaps our final bite of the apple on this issue, and being asked to say, y- yes, this is the will of the people and no, it's not in our estimation. And uh, and, and I think, I think, I think it probably makes sense to try and push this forward at this time. Um, given the fact that once a plan actually comes together, I would suggest to this group that there's a real strong likelihood that any plan that, that gets formed is almost certainly going to have to end up in front of us for further consideration before ground gets broken on it anyway. So my two cents, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Price?
Um, so I, I just wanted to clarify what exactly it is we're being asked to decide. Because we talked about vision before and we all voted and approved a plan um, for the Dunwoody Village area. And what has come up is that one of the property owners didn't like that vision that we approved and put forth. And so what we're actually voting on today is a compromise to that vision for that property owner. Rather than adopting a vision for the village. We, we did that when we looked at the plan as a whole and voted for it as a whole.
That's a fair, fair question for clarification. I know, Richard, you all want to try to address that. I, I'll start off by saying these property owners objected to the vision, for lack of a better term. And so the city excluded these two properties from the vision and a lawsuit was filed. And in that lawsuit, a compromise was achieved that is now reflected in what we see here.
The vi- the vision was for there to be a buffer and the compromise is to adjust what that buffer should be.
You, you, Richard or Paul, do you want to clarify what was just stated? Commissioner Price stated that before there was a acceptance of the entire buffer, hundred fifty feet, non-disturbed. And so what we have now is a proposal that for this entire western wall, for lack of a better term, that this hundred and fifteen, thirty-five feet of non-disturbed, hundred and fifteen feet of open space. To equal the hundred and fifty feet, so, right?
But yeah, I, I recall the discussions when we were looking at this and I remember it was the um, the consultant that proposed the solution because the buffer issue was a very significant issue and we talked about the overlay as a whole was to protect existing buffers as they were along that side. I remember that as part of that discussion when we looked at that area. So that's, I guess that's where I'm, I'm kind of wrapped around is this, we're, we're being asked to make an exception to the vision that we approved for and that the citizens came into agreement on because of a disagreement with the property owner. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't let the legal case be resolved before we make this decision. That's just my comment and my observation.
Mr. Aben, do you have any more comment?
So this is supposed to be my last planning commission. You guys really gave me an easy one, so. Um, yeah, I just, you know, I always like to think about what uh, the city council actually wants to hear from us. And they want to hear recommendations. Um, I think we have a lot of questions and we're not giving a lot of recommendations. So I'm going to give my recommendation. Uh, I always like to at least try to do that so they have something to think about, uh, go off of and try to make better. So you know, I don't think we're going to solve this legal issue at all. Um, and obviously everyone said we're not here to do that anyways, so we're not even going to try. Uh, and as much as I feel for all of the homeowners, um, I think my recommendation is that we need to give the developers as much leeway as we possibly can in order to make uh, the Dunwoody Village as great as it possibly can be. Um, you know, I think that that uh, you know, as Bob said, that property hasn't changed much at all since the seventies. We are way behind from all of our neighbor, uh, neighboring cities that have uh, totally, you know, outshined us in this area. We need to go ahead and, and get on with this and I think move on for the betterment of the city. So um, you know, as, as Mr. Webb said, this is a compromise for them. Uh, they don't even, didn't really want to do the hundred and fifty feet to begin with. Uh, I think it is a compromise. I think it's going to be a lot better in the end. Um, and I think we need to give them the opportunity to make it as great as it possibly can be. Um, so that's my recommendation. Um, I think that, you know, the city council should think about it that way in terms of the future of the city. Um, you know, the one thing I'll say to the homeowners is that, you know, Dunwoody has changed a lot. You know, the, there's barely, I, I think uh, the house uh, that was right behind, it's kind of adjacent to my neighborhood that um, the city just bought to build that park uh, for six million dollars was the last green space, more or less in Dunwoody, right? Um, from what I hear. So Dunwoody has changed. It's not a Dunwoody when, when, you know, folks moved in in the seventies and eighties that had trees and space and all that, it has changed dramatically. Um, you know, and it's, it's just kind of the way it is. We are a very urban area. Um, like I said, there's little to no green space left. It's kind of how it's going to be. Uh, if you want more green space, maybe Dunwoody is not the, the best spot. Uh, because again, it's a very major metropolitan area. Uh, in the next twenty years, it's going to continue to change, intend to get worse. So I think we need to, you know, this, this, this parcel of land is very small. Um, it's not like we have a lot of space to work with. It's kind of my main thing. So if it was a lot bigger, then yes, let's say the hundred fifty foot undisturbed is fine, but again, the space is very limited. I think we need to give the developer as much uh, opportunity to work with it as they can. So my recommendation is going to be to, you know, approve the, uh, approve the zoning and to approve the changes to the amendment.
Before we turn something into a motion, just as a matter of suggestion, and I think a matter of tradition, you know, my strongest advice would be, you know, whether it's with the attorneys or the homeowners, sit down and ask yourselves what you want this really to look like. If you have not had that conversation to everybody's satisfaction, there will never be satisfaction. And you know, my hope was you'd have some of that before now from our last meeting. But between now and the city council meeting, that opportunity does exist. And so while litigation obviously will run as coarse as it does, I think the better route is to ask yourselves from both sides, what is it we're looking for here and how do we achieve that together? Because I think that the opportunity to truly make Dunwoody Village a great place exists. I mean, my goodness, how many folks around here have said, why don't we have a place like that next, next to us? Well, this is it, but it's up to us to carry that out. And this is part of it, you know, and I think if we do this and with time and hopefully some very innovative in, uh, investors will see the vision that the people want and say, you know what? That's worth that investment to do there. So anyway, I, I'll stop and ask if there's any motions and uh, to the city council, recognizing that the city council does like when we are specific uh, with any kind of comments in the motion that uh, we provide to them, even though our comments are generally put into the minutes that they get to see. All right, Mr. You're going to take.
Do we need to make this two separate motions?
We have two different ones, so um, and they'll have to take two separate votes. But one is uh, rezoning um, these two parcels to, from C one to D V four, as you see in paragraph two there, and then revising the text amendments to comport with how the overlay district looks. And you'll see that on one of your pages for what the regulating map looks like.
Okay.
So two different things, but they have to be done together in order to be effective.
But as two separate motions.
It'd be two separate motions.
Um, but have to be done together as part of the same action.
We'll take two votes on this.
Roger that, okay. Well, I, I, I think, given, given that there are still potential opportunities uh, to, to pump the brakes on this and kinks to be worked out, I don't want to be in the way of further adjudication of this. And I would go to make a motion that we uh, approve uh, R Z two one dash zero one. Uh, the rezone from the current C one to the uh, Dunwoody Village overlay district as written.
Right. There's a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
It is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
Uh, I, I have a repeat of what I said before, which is just this. This seems, I, I know we're saying legal issue. This just, the more I think about it, this more this seems like we're trying to resolve a legal issue. We've already decided what we, what our vision for the village was. So this is a difference from that, that we're being presented as a solution to a legal issue, which could also be handled elsewhere. So I'm, I, I think it's a good compromise, but I don't know that I'm comfortable with it. And, and I'm going to be deciding literally last second whether I am or not. So that's just my comment on that.
Any further comments?
Commissioner O'Brien, um, could I get clarification that it is a rezoning to the D V four Village Center District? Perfect, thank you.
All right, any further comment? All those in favor, sign if I raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries. Be a second motion if we want to consider it a second item.
Uh, at this time, I will move uh, similarly with similar comments to my prior ones. I will save them, that we uh, uh, amend the village regulating map. And delete the regulations for the Dunwoody Village overlay district as written in the staff memo.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
Is there any further conversation on this motion? All those in favor, sign if I raise your hand. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Let me just uh, say two things. One, thank all of you for being here tonight and your participation. Secondly, please get together and I'm, I am a lawyer. I understand what litigation is about. But I'm also, having been a planning commissioner for a while now, realized that coming together to come up with a, you know, something that works for everybody will produce a better outcome in the long run, I think. And I think the opportunity, based on the meetings I've had with branches before and the D H A and the staff, to come up with something that will work for you is also there and, and, and sharing that with the city council, right? They're the deciding body. We're just a recommending body. So I just want to say thank all of you for being here tonight. Yes.
I just want to add something as well to the folks who are here tonight for this. Um, my, my vote against was not because I was against the idea, but I want to make a point to those who, um, to the homeowners, there is a risk here with the lawsuit continuing that if it goes in favor of the commercial owners, then instead of a one hundred fifty foot buffer, there could be a thirty-five foot buffer only. I second what Bob said because I do think that the vision of the one hundred fifty foot buffer with the one hundred fifteen feet being park space, there is a benefit to that. And I would encourage you to sit down, talk about that, see what that could look like. I voted against it because of the lack of clarity with what is going on. I do not believe we should be involved with something that is so unclear. That was my discomfort, but I do believe in the vision that was presented. And I would encourage you to sit down with the property owners, the commercial property owners. And I do worry about the risk that if this lawsuit were to continue, it could be a thirty-five foot buffer only.
Thank you, Commissioner. Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make? Okay, thank all of you again. All right, do you, you guys need a break or do you want to move to the next item? Move on, move on. All right, we have new business. I presume we have new business. We have to have a presenter for the new business.
That's a good thing.
Uh-huh. Welcome. We have a new business, item four, five, six and seven, which are our favorite text amendments. We love the words.
I know you guys have had a couple marathon-long meetings the past a couple of times and hopefully uh, this will be nice and concise for you. So let me pull up the presentation real quick. So over the fa- past few months, the community development department has compiled a list of text amendments to the city code. Uh, we're mainly looking to clean up the existing code. Um, we're not proposing any extensive changes in our opinion. Our general goals are to correct inconsistencies, clarify vague language and improve processes. We feel that these amendments will be to the benefit of both staff and the community. We have fourteen proposed text amendments that span chapters eight, sixteen, twenty-six and twenty-seven. Each chapter has its own agenda item. Um, so each agenda item is going to require its own separate motion and separate vote. Um, I do have them numbered here um, on this list for ease of reference. If you guys ever want me to flip back to this slide for reference, just let me know. Um, the first uh, agenda item is the chapter eight text amendments. We have two amendments for this chapter. Number one is section eight dash twenty-seven. This amendment gives a building official the power to acquire plans to be signed and stamped by a professional architect or engineer. This power was previously granted by the residential building code, but the state of Georgia deleted that section. This was brought to our attention by the building official who thought it was necessary to maintain that right, especially given the above-average size of new homes in Dunwoody. Um, uh, he feels that it's necessary to ensure a higher level of quality. The second amendment is to, related to expired building permits. So issued permits expire one hundred and eighty days after issuance or one hundred and eighty days after the most recent inspection. This amendment establishes a process to reinstate permits up to two years after expiration. Um, we as staff do this informally in practice, but this amendment formalizes the process. These are the only two amendments I have. If you guys would like, you can go ahead and ask questions and make the motion now, or I can marathon through the entire presentation. It's up to you guys.
But my thought is, given that each of the sections differ, so you know, chapter eight, chapter sixteen, would it not be appropriate to stop at each one? Because they don't.
I think that's the best course of action, but.
Yeah, and because they don't necessarily interrelate too much, do they?
No, not necessarily.
Would that be, if you guys have looked at those?
Let's do it that way.
We're in agreement with that. Okay, so let's go with um, one presentation at a time on this and then we'll take a vote on it with any recommendations that we might have. Because they, they, they run the gamut through the code, right? So they're different. All right, so we are now in um, the first item, which is section eight twenty-seven. Um, i- items number one and two, can we put those two together? Or is that to be separated? How, how, how do you want to do that? Do we just vote?
You can make a motion to accept all of the amendments to chapter eight as a whole.
Okay, within that code section.
Within the code section, so you can just move to approve the chapter eight amendments.
Okay, so, all right, well, the, these are the chapter eight text amendments that we just had a presentation on. So if you have any questions of the staff on these.
Um, may I ask with that, uh, when, when you talk about sealing new plans, or excuse me, when you talk about sealing plans, uh, are we talking about new structures only? Are we talking about remodels? What are we talking about here?
It would apply to new residential, new residential construction. It would also apply to um, additions to residential structures that require engineered products. So this is an issue that the building official has stated he's come across several times here, but he doesn't necessarily have the power to do anything about it. But essentially builders will use engineering products. You know, if somebody is removing the load-bearing wall and then they put in an engineered beam to support it, technically he can't require them to provide engineered plans utilizing those products. So it would apply to. So it would apply to, yes, new construction, but also remodels using those engineered products and also remodels adding things like second stories where things need to be structurally reinforced.
When was this stricken by the state of Georgia? You indicated that the state of Georgia struck this, leaving a gap, and now we're trying to fill that gap.
I don't know the exact date of when it was struck. I know it was recently. The state of Georgia has, I don't know if you guys are aware, recently been sort of simplifying the residential code and removing a lot of different restrictions that maybe are more applicable to rural areas, but in areas like metro Atlanta has a little bit more of effect.
Yeah, the state of Georgia struck that in 2018, and they did that by saying that chapter one of the International Residential Code, which is the administrative section wholesale does not apply. And with that comes this requirement, typically the International Residential Code is adopted by municipalities as a provision that the building official at their discretion and professional judgment can require engineered documents, and, and that got wholesale deleted from, by the state of Georgia by taking out that, that chapter of the code. And it puts the onus on municipalities to sort of put any of those requirements into their building code, chapters of the code, which is what we're proposing to do now.
So in your estimation, I mean, safety aside, does this change mean that remodels, putting aside new, new construction, which I think makes sense, does this mean that remodels then get substantially more expensive for anybody who chooses to do so because they require the official seal?
So I think, I think you're spot on. That, that's kind of the trade off. New construction generally has designed documents, so we do not get houses that are new, that do not have stamped documents, that, that doesn't happen. The problem that we're encountering is with additions by either small scale builders or by private homeowners that can be on the second floor that use these kind of engineered products that are supposed to be calculated. That, that's the problem that we're encountering, and that would, that would make the downside of this is that it would potentially make a project more expensive. The upside is, you know, that we, we have a safe house, but we are fast, but you're spot on.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? Any other questions?
Are we just doing the first? This first one is the one about the, I'm sorry, is, is the one about the plan reviews and the permits a separate vote?
Yeah, we're just dealing with section eight, which is items number one and two.
Right, so number two, okay, I do have a question about number two. In the packet received from the city, the, it's actually redlined, the reinstatement fee 10% up to $10,000. Because it's a section six, it's A6, so 8.27 permits. If you go to A6, and you read through that, the time limitations and issuance, it struck at the end, the fee shall be 10% of the original permits total fees up to a maximum of $10,000. But in the city presentation here, it looks like it still is standing. What, what are we, what am I looking at?
So the text amendment doesn't directly, it originally directly referenced a fee. We did take that out because we are actually proposing just to update the fee schedule rather than specifying that directly in the code, just because logistically it makes more sense to specify it in our fee schedule. So I think that might be causing some confusion.
Okay, that does help because I'm just trying to marry the two. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right.
I have one question though.
Ready for motion?
Yeah, I've got one question real quick. So out of the, maybe five for Paul, so out of the surrounding cities, I think that Dunwoody is the only one that doesn't have this in place now, right, on architectural drawings?
So I know Sandy Springs Building Official does have the power to require engineered drawings and did exercise that power. And I believe there's also other municipalities, but I'm personally only aware of Sandy Springs. Are you aware of any others?
Sort of our building official did a sort of comparative, he's from rural Texas, and, and this was common in rural Texas, to have that authority, it's, I think a lot of our surrounding municipalities do have it. But we don't have the exact list of municipalities for you.
Okay. It's my only question, thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions, it's time for a motion to deal with chapter eight.
Can we keep it simple? Can it just be a motion to approve the text amendments to section eight dash 27?
Is there a second to that? A second, Mr. Price? Okay, is the motion a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, sign if I raise your hand. All right, that's unanimous. All right, let's go to the next one, which is chapter 16.
Just real quick, just for my notes, who offered the second? Thanks, Mr. Price. Okay, so for chapter 16, we have seven total amendments proposed. The first amendment is related to time limitations. The, it is similar to chapter eight, there is not a process for reinstating expired land disturbance permits. So chapter eight covers building permits, chapter 16 covers land disturbance. This amendment rectifies that and mirrors the same language as chapter eight. The next six amendments that I'm going to talk about are all centering around the appeals process. Just quick background, you all probably don't deal with appeals very often, they typically go before the Board of Appeals. But essentially, parties that are agreed to by an administrative decision, so for example, the approval of a subdivision plat or the approval of a land disturbance permit have an avenue to express their grievances and also potentially reverse decisions made by the Community Development Department. However, chapter 16 does not have a standard appeals process. So the next six proposed amendments seek to clarify the process and make it consistent across this chapter, and also make it consistent with chapter 27. So this is going to span over multiple sections of chapter 16. Before, I would also like to preface, this is a graphic I created just sort of explaining the standard appeals process. Once an item, sorry, let me back up, an agreed party files to appeal with the Community Development Departments, and it gets placed on the zoning board of appeals agenda. When the city has a board of appeals, most appeals will typically go before them. Once an item is appealed, it stays all proceedings. So for example, if the approval of a land disturbance permit was appealed, any work on that site would cease unless it was a matter of something like public safety or need. And then it proceeds, then staff proceeds to provide all relevant information to the zoning board of appeals regarding that decision. And then lastly, the ZBA holds the hearing. They have 60 days to make the decision, that's required by the code. And then they make their decision according to specified criteria. It's the opinion of staff that this is the most logical and best laid out process. However, the process laid out in 16 dash 33 is slightly different and a little bit less clear. It specifies oddly that any decision made according to article two, like I said, such as the issuance of a land disturbance permit be published online in the newspaper and notice sent to adjacent property owners. This is sort of, I would say, almost impossible to enforce. The Community Development Department processes hundreds of permits a year, so it's sort of a weird thing to include in our appeals section. Additionally, it only provides, or requires a provision that says, you know, we have to provide notice of the hearing. In the standard code, it requires 30 days of 30 days of notice of that meeting. And then in this part of the code in 16 dash 33, it only requires 10 days. And that's just insufficient timing, in our opinion, for an appellate to prepare their case. And then essentially what we're proposing for 16 dash 33 is for it to just mirror the standard language that's in chapter 27. So then, rather than looking like this 16 dash 33 process, it would look the exact same as it is for chapter 27. So it would look like this one. And we just think it would be better for the appeals process to be consistent and clear and not have the weird caveat about advertising requirements. And then this amendment for section 16 dash 114 is essentially amending the reference to the appeals process. So currently in the tree ordinance, it has an odd reference stating that, you know, it just goes before the zoning board of appeals, but doesn't have any, any information. We just want it to reference back to the process established in 16 dash 33, just so that it's really clear what you want to do, what to do when you appeal something in the tree ordinance. And then additionally, 16 dash 272 would be a new section. And again, it would be similar to 16 dash 33 where we would specify that the appeals process for articles three and articles four of chapter 16 follow the standard appeals process. Article three, just for reference, dictates subdivision requirements, and then article four dictates things like street scape requirements. So within each of these divisions, or excuse me, these articles, article three, sections 190 and 202, and then article four is section 16 dash 222. Each of these three sections references an appeals process that is extremely odd and not specific. First of all, again, it has that odd caveat about all decisions being advertised, and like I said, that's sort of just an impossible standard for staff to meet. We issue so many permits and make so many determinations. It's sort of just an odd thing to have in there. And then second, it specifies that these types of appeals go to mayor and city council, and that's contrary to all the other appeals processes in earlier in chapter 16 and chapter 27. So we're just trying to, again, make this consistent. We want 16 dash 190 to 202 and 222 to refer to the standard appeals process. Because this appeals process, if you can see on the graphic, doesn't specify the effect of the appeal. It doesn't specify the record of the decision. It doesn't specify hearing notice. It doesn't specify a timeline for making a decision. And then it also doesn't provide any decision making criteria, so it's just sort of, like I said, extremely odd, and we're trying to rectify this issue and make everything, like I said, consistent, and that's the key here. Um, so those are the text amendments for chapter 16. I hope it's not too confusing. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Start to my right.
I have no questions at this time.
Questions? We're going to be having any questions, so that would mean we're ready for a motion.
I'll run it. Motion to approve section 16 dash 33, section 16 dash 114, division three, division four, section-
I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Do you need each one?
Richard just informed me that these are public hearings, so we do have to open up-
Oh, my goodness, I forgot. We don't have anybody here.
All of the-
All right, well, so we had to do our vote for the other one back open. All right, we're going to drop back one. And I apologize, there was nobody in the audience, for those of you who are blind, so that's why we jumped so quickly ahead. So going back to item number four, which is chapter eight, are there any folks speaking in favor of that? All right, saying none. Are there any folks speaking in opposition to that? Saying none, the public comment on that is closed. So if we could then now have a vote on item number four of new business, which is the chapter eight revisions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as submitted section eight dash 27.
I will second that motion. There's a motion and a second. Any further conversation? All those in favor, sign if I raise your hand. Thank you all. And now we'll jump back to where we were in terms of a chapter 16. So we've had a sat presentation. Are there any people speaking in favor of the proposed revisions to the text amendments? Any people speaking in opposition? All right, saying none for either, the public comment portion is closed. So with that, motion will be in order.
I will make a motion to approve as submitted section 16 dash 33, section 16 dash 114, division three, division four, section 16 dash 222, section 16 dash 272.
All right, just to make sure our scribbler, did we get all the sections covered? Just want to make sure. Okay. There's a motion, there's a second to that motion.
I'll second that.
So just for clarification, this is all of the amendments proposed by SAV to chapter 16? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any further conversation? All those in favor, signify there is your hand. All those in opposition? All right, thank you. Passes, and so now we'll move on to the next one, and I'll be mindful of the public comment again. And this is chapter 26.
Yes, and there's only one proposed amendment to chapter 26, so it's pretty easy. Essentially, we are proposing to add a new code section, section 26 dash eight, and this section would outlaw obstruction in the right of way. This is an issue that came to our attention from our code enforcement officer, who realized that we didn't have anything that prevented this. This is a common provision in other municipalities. And so he feels that it's best to add this because it allows him to rectify potentially dangerous situations such as plants obstructing the site distance for drivers and bikers and pedestrians, or trash cans and dumpsters, things like that, impeding sidewalks. So this is a matter of improving public safety and giving code enforcement the power to rectify those issues. And again, this is the only text amendment. I'm available if you guys have any questions.
So are there any? Okay, so do we have any people speaking in favor of this amendment? None? Any people speaking in opposition? All right, saying none, the public comment section is closed, so are there any questions of the planning commissioners? Just, is one of those that you could put yourself in this picture? Ed, I know that I'll do this at the Manhattan, right? Everything's open. I'll ask a question, so you have the right of way, which includes most of the street and sidewalks. And so it says, if somebody were to put out cuttings and block the sidewalk, that'd be a violation of the code.
Technically, yes, if they were impeding the sidewalk, but things like clippings and things get removed very quickly typically. This is a code section where, you know, the code enforcement would use to rectify ongoing issues where people are consistently blocking the right of way or leaving junk in the right of way, or somebody has hedges that are in the right of way that are obstructing vision and causing a dangerous situation. So, I mean, technically placing your lawn clippings would be a violation. But that's a problem that's easily rectified.
Well, I mean, here's my point, so it says obstruction of the right of way. And part of this is to maintain site distance. And part of this is to maintain site distance as much as anything, or just to keep it so people can keep moving either on the street or sidewalk without having to step over or around that thing.
Correct. It's just making sure that our right-of-way stays free and clear to allow for easy transportation and to make sure site distance is maintained, things like that.
Do you have a?
And where this came up, like in the avocados that they put enforcement office on this, where this came up, where it was problematic that we didn't have something like this, was down the construction fencing at the public shopping center. That the building that came loose and just like flattered in the street. So it's not like a necessary object that's placed anywhere, but it is a temporary obstruction that needs to be fixed. And we didn't have anything immediate that we could cite them for specifically. And then some of this, I mean, the trash cans are governed by other sections. There's, there's items like the viewing distance that's covered for other sections too. But the nice thing about this is that it's an easy section for the officer to immediately bring up where they don't need to do research. It's kind of a catch-all thing that makes enforcement easier.
Then, just for the second part, I think when we're talking about gravel and in many instances, new construction, the process is, you know, say you're clearing the land, you have a lot of dirt where the driveway might go, you'll put down aggregate. The workers, you know, work on it for six months. And then the driveway is typically put on top of that after it's been compacted. Would that be interpreted to mean that those stones that make up the aggregate could actually go on a sidewalk or the street that is adjacent to that?
So generally, for sort of ongoing construction periods, we, we have recovered like in the dragging mud and dragging construction materials into the roads on the sidewalks, that we already have existing, existing items on the books that, that we could use. This is sort of for those odd kind of things that may not, we may not even know what we use this for, but this is sort of a broad, a broad writing that allows us to deal with it as it comes up.
And then people cut trees, sometimes the larger poles from a pine tree, it might be twenty feet long and big around. You'll see them stack them up on the road pending their removal by a truck, which may come the next day or the day after. Would that be affecting this?
Yeah, and there are specific items like, like as a, as a, we regards to pick up kind of trash and the pickup of yard clippings or there's specific, and I don't know what the requirements are, but it has to be, it can be put out a certain amount of days before, before it's picked up, and it can remain a certain amount of days. So this isn't supposed to address those, those items, those we already have code language for. This is for no other types of obstructions.
And impede and endanger are specific enough to be enforceable? Like, let me give you an example. And this, this comes up all the time wherever you see a concentration of scooters. And cities have had to grapple with impeding the sidewalk, mostly really for people who are wheelchair-bound or, or, you know, restricted in their movement, and they just can't walk around it because it's there in front of their sidewalk and now they're stuck. But is that what that means, or?
That's actually a good example, yeah, because there aren't sort of any code requirements to allow you, or like if you park your bike somewhere on, on the sidewalk, there are always to park it. But that's outside of the area that's needed for ADA access, sort of for, to maintain sort of free and clear at least three feet. But, but, but something like this could be used to, we would, we would certainly classify that as impeding, as impeding access if it blocks the sidewalk with vehicles like that. That's, that's potentially a good example for something that's not covered by another code section at the moment.
I don't have any more questions. Do any of you have questions or? Not time for a motion.
I motion to accept the text amendments to chapter twenty-six as written.
There's a second. I'll second. Any further conversation? Seeing none. All those in favor, send a five or raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Okay. Wait, did we get public comment? We did not get public comment. You do remind me. So we have to take that back. We already did public comment. Okay. I've been, okay, all right. So the next one is chapter twenty-seven.
Yes, so the next chapter is chapter twenty-seven. This is much longer. Our proposed text amendments, we have ten in total. The first one is number five regarding expired and obsolete zoning districts. Dunwoody has two expired zoning districts that are technically still active, zones RCH and RCD. These zoning districts are expired, which means that a developer cannot rezone to these zoning districts. However, they're still active on the zoning map because multiple neighborhoods still maintain these zoning districts. So for example, Claridge Square and Formbrook off of Dunwoody Club Drive. And I just included on the right-hand side, just screenshots of those from our zoning map, just for reference. The regulations for RCD and RCH were, at some point, I believe in twenty-fourteen, removed from the code. But staff feels that they need to be reincorporated for ease of reference, especially if homeowners would like to seek variances. It is difficult to request relief from regulations that aren't available in the current version of the code. So that's the reason we're proposing this, and we just want to add them back as an appendix to chapter twenty-seven. The next amendment is number six, twenty-seven dash fifty-eight regarding rear setbacks. Twenty-seven dash fifty-eight details the law and building regulations for single-family homes. Currently, there is a footnote on our dimensional table that contradicts the code and standard practice by not assigning corner lots a rear setback. It essentially states that these lots are subject only to street setbacks and interior side setbacks. Most lots that aren't corner lots require a forty-foot rear setback and ten-foot interior side setback. So that's a thirty-foot difference between those. That is a significant difference. The amendment seeks to rectify this by requiring a rear setback. The rear setback would be parallel to the front property line. On the right-hand side of the screen, you can see that a graphic that I've made to illustrate the difference in the buildable area and how that would look when the rear setback is applied, as it should be. The next amendment is regarding the allowed uses in the O-dash-I zoning district. O-dash-I is office institutional. Currently, O-I does not allow any retail at all. However, a few months ago during the business license review process, the community development department received a license request for a jewelry store, which is considered retail, located in, in an office building zone, O-I. The city of Dunwoody technically, as most cities do, does not require a business to obtain a license before they open. They have thirty days after they open to officially apply this like to an issue because the jewelry store tenant had not confirmed if the zoning was appropriate prior to opening. However, staff conducted a site visit and determined that the use was unobtrusive and did not conflict with the character and intent of the O-I zoning district. And so based on these findings, we are proposing an amendment to the allowed uses in this district that would allow the jewelry store to stay and additionally allow future retail tenants in the O-I district without negatively impacting, like I said, the character and intent. And we've written some standards to help ensure that. What we didn't want was having, you know, office buildings converting completely to commercial. And so, we've written standards that limit retail to the office buildings only. So retail would be encroaching into any of the residential buildings, because the O-I district, I don't know if you guys are aware, has several residential, like apartment properties as well that are existing. And so they, retail wouldn't be allowed to move in there. It would only be in the office buildings. It would also restrict retail to accessory uses on the ground floor. So it can't be a primary use. And it would limit the size to two thousand square feet per tenant. These limitations are intended to allow small, low-impact retail spaces to move into these office buildings. Overall, staff feels that it will allow greater flexibility for business owners and property owners while also supporting the comprehensive plan goal of supporting business and economic development. The next amendment is for section twenty-seven dash one eleven, which provides guidelines for the community development director on how to make use determinations. This is a daily activity that we do in the zoning department. It is something that we have to do, especially when reviewing business licenses. We're typically reviewing at least ten per week, and often people's proposed businesses don't fit into, you know, black and white definitions within our defined categories. So we're not proposing to change any of the criteria we use in making these determinations, but rather this section has a requirement that these decisions be advertised. Again, this is an almost daily decision. That's a really big burden on staff to have to advertise in this way. It's, I would say, sort of next to impossible to enforce that. And in our opinion, a little bit unnecessary as well. This is part of the daily operations for a zoning department. And this isn't a requirement that any other cities have. So again, we're not changing any of the criteria we use to make our determinations, just removing the requirement for advertisement. The next amendment is to have section twenty-seven dash one fifty point one, which dictates the permitting process for telecommunications facilities on private properties. Essentially, we just want to amend a small portion of this section to reference the appeal section for chapter twenty-seven, which is article five, division eight. Currently, again, this is one of those weird inconsistencies where we have a random part of our code that's referencing a very odd appeals process and not the standard one. So we're trying to rectify that. This next amendment is regarding relatives' residences. So we have provisions in our code that allow people who live in single-family homes to build a separate suite that has its own kitchen facility for use by a relative. There is a caveat in that section that requires the unit to be removed after the relative it's intended for vacates it. This is one of those requirements that is really difficult to enforce. And also, if it were to be enforced, it would be very intrusive to people's personal property and lives. And so, we propose to remove it. I'd also like to point out that we also feel that it's not necessary to have them remove it. Our code already prevents people from renting out separate parts of their house because we limit single-family homes to only having one household. And so the way we define household already prevents them to renting it out to someone outside of their family. And so we are proposing to remove this requirement again, because it is not easily enforceable. The next amendment is regarding the special administrative permit section. Special administrative permits offer administrative relief to certain requirements of our code. Staff already posts these decisions online. We're just proposing to formalize that requirement in section twenty-seven dash four thirty-nine of our code. And then, again, we have another weird situation where our code is referencing a non-standard appeals process. So I'm just proposing that we have that section reference the proper appeal section, which is article five, division eight of chapter twenty-seven. The twelfth amendment is for two separate sections of the code, section twenty-seven dash one oh four and section five, seventy-four point five. Section one oh four is dictates the required, the zoning requirements for the perimeter center zoning district. And it states that properties with a floor area ratio of twelve or over provide an additional type of open space. Staff proposes to remove this requirement. We feel that it's unnecessary and not particularly useful. It doesn't affect the amount of open space required. It just removed this sort of weird requirement. There's nowhere else in our code where we're referencing floor area ratio. This is the, literally, I mean, even in the entire perimeter center zoning district, this is the only place it's referenced. And because it's not useful, we're just proposing to remove it. And then if we remove this requirement, we would just also propose that we remove the definition for floor area ratio, because again, it's not referenced anywhere else in the code, and it's not useful. The last proposed amendment is the addition of two new sections, section twenty-seven dash four oh two and four twenty-five to establish a new type of zoning procedure, concurrent variances and concurrent special exceptions. Our code actually already has similar zoning processes for the PD districts and the perimeter center districts. Our code is, it requires two separate processes if somebody were to do a large development and require both a rezoning or special land use permit and a variance. This would allow them to go through those two processes at the same time. And so when they're going through the rezoning or special land use process, they would also be requesting their variance, which means it would go before you all, the planning commission, and also the mayor and city council concurrently with that rezoning. It would go by the same criteria as the variance or special exception. It's just the body that approves it is different. We think that this will be a benefit to both applicants and staff. It consolidates the different processes. So it'll be a little bit easier and more concise. It also allows mayor and city council and relevant stakeholders to be more confident in the final product because there's not this question of, oh, will this be approved by the zoning board of appeals or not? And that, you know, affects what they're able to do. You know, it could, you know, the site plan doesn't get approved, but it was conditioned to the site plan, so now we have to go through this process all over again. It would sort of take out that question. And then, section four oh two, like I said, is for concurrent variances. And then section four twenty-five is for concurrent special exceptions. Those two sections sort of mirror each other's language. They're very similar. That's the end of my presentation for chapter twenty-seven. Again, I'm able to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. There's a lot of paragraphs. All right, do we have anybody in the audience speaking in favor of the proposed changes? Do we have anybody speaking in opposition to the proposed changes? Seeing none, the public comments, time is closed. So I will turn it over to the planning commissioners on any section, all sections, if you have questions or comments. Now's the time. I'll kick it off real quick. This has to do with the section twenty-seven, four oh two and four twenty-five on concurrent rate variances. So, what you said was the standards that we apply to the variance would be the same as the zoning board of appeals does today. One of the things that distinguishes the planning commission from the zoning board of appeals is that we're just a recommending body obviously to the city council. Whereas the zoning board of appeals is a quasi-judicial body. With that comes certain obligations of one and not the other. So does this change any of those obligations? In other words, if we say, you know what, we like the zoning, but I'm sorry, no, we don't agree with those variances, and the applicant says, the heck with you guys. Where did they go? To the city council? Then, we, we recommend the whole thing to the city council. And now the city council's in the business of the variances.
Yes, so city council would make the decisions on the rezoning and the variance. They would have the option to deny the variances and- And the same, if the board of appeals denies a variance, the applicant can appeal to the Superior Court of DeKalb County. And so, again, they would have that same option where if their variance was denied, it could be appealed to the Superior Court.
Does that appeal come from the city council and not from us or from us as well?
I don't believe it applies to planning commission. It would apply to the final decision by the mayor and city council.
The reason I say that is it's important because in operation, if you ultimately with the ZVA, you know, they say pretty close, right? They, they may go look at the property, but they listen and that's the extent of it. We're out there, you know, listening to people, right? Going to meetings and, and, you know, big zoning coming up. Oh, they've got a couple of variances. So if that comes to us as a process and we're just a recommending body, I don't know that it carries the same weight as the ZVA members where they're a quasi-judicial body. So as long as we're recommending body, then, you know, we can do the thing that we do, which is really try to formulate or gauge public opinion on this, that, the other. You know, just to be part of the community, you know, as you talk to somebody in the public or something, the new one or the old one, as it were. So I just want to clarify that point because if, if we turn out to be quasi-judicial, that changes us a lot. So thank you for clarifying that for me. Yes, Commissioner.
I have a question on the telecommunications. When I go through the text amendment, did you just remove all appeals process from there? I'm trying to find where we've redirected to a different consistent appeals process. Or is there no appeals process now?
My apologies. I don't think I referenced that section to Article Five, Division Eight. But just in general, Article Five, Division Eight covers all of chapter 27. So even if something's not, actually, in most of 27, for, you know, the different sections, we're not referencing, oh, you can appeal this according to these standards. It's just sort of like, generally, based on this chapter, it's understood that you can appeal it even if it's not explicitly stated.
Is it in the other sections, though?
In chapter 27, I don't believe there's very many references to Article Five, Division Eight. It's just, again, generally understood that you can administratively appeal.
I would probably be more comfortable creating some clarity with that and amended to add that appeals process in just to, again, provide the clarity in the, in the process.
Yeah, we can definitely change it to say, you know, any appeals to this section would be subject to Article Five, Division Eight. That's a very good suggestion. Again, you just want to, I'm sure you're going to make it clear in your motion, but just make sure that's clear in the motion.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, if that means we're time for a motion, if the commissioners are so inclined. I know, so take, take your time so we get it right.
What's the, what is the correct way to phrase that? Could you help me with the phrasing? Any appeals in, any appeals of the decision will follow? What would be the correct way to add that in?
So a good language would be any appeals to decisions made, you know, subject to this chapter can be appealed subject to.
Any appeals to the decision made subject to this chapter?
Can be appealed subject to.
Can be appealed subject to Article Five, Division Eight? Can I pull an ad and do an all-inclusive approval with the amendment to 27-150.1? Would that be acceptable, Bob? Since there were so many? Yeah, okay. All, all, I just want to make sure I don't have to list every individual one. So then, a motion to approve the text amendments in chapter 27 as written with an amendment to 27-150.1 to include any appeals to the decision made subject to this chapter can be appealed subject to Article Five, Division Eight.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Is there a second? Is there any further conversation, questions? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All right, passes unanimously. Let's see. Is that it? Text amendment streets. Do we have any other new items? That's it. We're good. All right. Do we have any other business? All right, and do we have any further public comments? All right, seeing no public comment, we're opening it up to commission comment. So I'll start with the left.
First of all, I want to say thank you, Jared Abrams, for coming back again to finish this out. And we will miss you and we have appreciated you on this commission. And may you have freer evenings.
Thank you.
You know, and I do want to make a comment. And I don't know if this gets written and, of course, it's on videography for perpetuity. But I struggled with that decision with the village tonight. I greatly struggled because ultimately I agree with the compromise that was presented. I felt put in a position to be a legal body ultimately, and that was very uncomfortable. I wish there was clarity and to city council, I hope you find clarity before this comes to you because I think that that makes it a much easier decision. Ultimately, I hope that the homeowners and maybe the city can work with the homeowners to present them with a vision that they might be able to understand and help calm their nerves. Ultimately, I think this is driven by comfort with the known and fear of the unknown. If there's anything we can do to help them with that, the risk to them is greatest because if this continues to go down in a lawsuit and it falls on the side of the commercial property owners, they are at a potential, a much greater loss situation. So this was a difficult decision tonight and it had nothing to do with the vision that I greatly agree with. It had to do with something that I felt just too great of a lack of clarity.
Thank you.
Paul, Richard, and Alan, thank you very much for your time. This was a long meeting. Thank you for your time with respect to the Dunwoody Village overlay. A lot of work's been going on there. To my commissioner colleagues, thank you for your comments. It helped me see things a little clearer. I too look at the vision that we all set forth back in 2020 for the Dunwoody Village. And what we proposed there, a lot of community involvement was, was participating in that and I'm looking forward to the vision. So thank you for that.
Jared, thank you for your service fairly well.
Thank you, sir.
I'll just echo what Erica said that I, I thought it was a great compromise. I hope it gets worked out. I just felt like we were being asked to to, to, to be the legal settlement for an issue that I don't think we ought to be. So, anyway, that's all. And thanks again. You're not going to get the same speech I gave you last.
This has to be my last one officially. Well, thank you, Erica, for the kind words and, and Thomas and Robert and everyone else. I thank you so much. So yeah, I'm going to email Lynn after this. She, she has my replacement. She just has to get them supposedly approved by the city council. So I'm going to see where she is in that status. As long as I didn't mention that, it's just in case I walk in here again next month and you guys are like. Yeah, so and I told, I mean, it's fine. I mean, my wife has to do, you know, get the three kids in the bath and get into bed. I don't mind missing those couple hours, honestly. It's quite the, the task, but yeah, I think they've just got to get that person approved in the next city council. So I'll see where she stands on that. But don't be shocked if I am here in September. And then, yeah, I just want to say, yeah, I echo Erica's comments as well on that. You know, the reason is, you know, and that whole thing is that to me, it was not going to be decided by us and it wasn't going to be decided by us tonight. And it's probably going to go to the city council and whatever, ever they say it's going to go on and, and sounds like potentially end up in a lawsuit. But, you know, it just needs to end up for the betterment of, you know, Dunwoody Village and Dunwoody on a whole. So that's it.
Well, I too want to echo you being here, Commissioner Abrams, through the entirety of your career here. I'm going to say, as your kids get older and they have to do homework, you're going to be begging to come back versus riding herd over their homework. But you've brought a lot of great comments and perspective that this board benefited from as well as the citizens. So just say thank you for your time here. I just want to point something out that, you know, the staff, I think, has made presentations to the city council on two things, one, impact fees and service fees that would typically apply in the perimeter area. And why do I mention that? As you know, I'm an advocate for really good development in the perimeter area where you're served overall by four modest stations. And it's a commercial area that really allows us to benefit by, amongst many things, paying really low city taxes. So how it develops well is important. But what comes with that is amenities, the kinds of things that, you know, as more people move into it, they can use and we can use too. So the question is, who pays for the amenities? So I know that with the service fee, for example, that's around Truist Park. They've used that one mill to pay for the transportation system that they didn't have before. But I also know that other places have impact fees, for example, on new units of apartments. And so the question becomes if we had that revenue to build the amenities such as parks in the center of a perimeter, more robust trail systems, that makes it so that the people who live there and us benefit greatly with a, a place that's fun and, you know, Ed's home, right? Your backyard that, you know, would just make it a lot better. So I hope that conversation continues to move forward with the city council, recognizing, I think, from a developer and building owner's perspective, if the money is used to benefit their area, they don't mind it too much because the value goes up. And so think about it, the closer you are to a park, the more valuable your property is in a more urban setting. So that's the kind of idea behind this. So I would hope that the staff and city council continues that conversation so that we can see that before these things get built. Right? We complain about amenities coming later. Let's get the money in before they're built so that stuff can be there and make for even a greater place for perimeter. So I just make that comment as something I've been mulling over for many months now, if not years, and, and hope that you guys continue pushing that forward from a staff perspective and the city council as well. So I will say thank you all very much for a complicated meeting today. What we have done with Dunwoody Village, I think, will hopefully allow a vision to be executed. But between now and the city council meeting, I really do hope the neighbors and the, not so much the property owner, they're important, but the staff get together and say, okay, what can we do to make this work for everybody? Because I think the answer is there with everybody at the same table. So, anyway, thank you all for your journey.